I assume you're doing all the hands roll, all of your doing those?
I am doing those, yes. There isn't any question here.
Yeah, there's only one tonight. Two, probably.
All right, we are good to go. Okay, so what is called, are you going to call me in your order?
I shall call them in order and we will start with questions. Questions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God.
Okay, um, voice of roll call. Chris, have you got the chance for all of us to meet everyone or?
Or.
What? I already got their name and phone, so I don't know if you'll get a chance to hear it. Dave, I'm happy to have you back. Well, thank you. Good to have you back. First, I'm sorry for your loss. Thank you. Get your back to normal. Okay, very good. Sorry, do you call roll please?
Okay, we will call roll call. Uh, trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Dunn?
Here.
Trustee Thomas? Yes, here. Trustee Brant?
Here.
Trustee Fritz?
Here.
Trustee Campbell? Here. And trustee Henny?
Yes, I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, well, I need to do a reading of the rest of the information from here. Um, let's do that. Uh, open meeting back. Uh, this is my question. Uh, since the public body physically present in lieu of a remote participation, as President John Henning of the Board of Trustees of McHenry County Conservation District has determined that it's not practical or prudent to hold a public meeting of the Board of Trustees for September 17th, 2020 in person due to current pandemic, uh, those were available on this. Okay, and then we do not need the remote participation at all here. And I welcome Chris, uh, he's going to do his reading of the goals. I, Christopher Dunn, do spot follow where you are firm that I will faithfully discharge the brief of the office of trustee as member of the board of trustees of McHenry County Conservation District. In accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the Illinois statute, A, according to both rules and policies of the county of McHenry and the policies by law governed through the McHenry County Conservation District, this is my ability. Thank you, and welcome.
Welcome.
All right, we have public comments. Anybody else there? Wendy monitoring?
Yes, Stephanie is monitoring and Wendy, I don't see anybody else raising their hand. Anybody wishing to speak?
Nope, there's, I don't see anything.
Okay. That brings us to our audit presentation of Jim Savio. Jim of a pea's eye, Bob.
He is. So Andy, do you want to introduce Jim from Seekage? If he's available, I'd make you a co-host so you can...
I was having a little bit of a hard time hearing, but I think it's improved now. Um, yeah, please introduce Jim Savio. He's the partner, a partner with Seekage, and he oversees the district's audit, um, for many years, going back some time now. Um, Seekage is a very well-known governmental accounting firm. Their expertise in, in the government industry and they're widely known as one of the leaders in the public sector accounting. Um, they now rank as one of the country's top 35 certified public accounting firms and conduct over 200 audits of other governmental agencies. Um, under Jim's guidance, the district first received, received its first CAFR award, some, I think, 14 years ago now, and, um, they've been key to the district getting that certification of excellence in reporting, um, every consecutive year since then. So, um, appreciate all of his efforts and the guidance he's given the district. And he's, I'm going to turn it over to him and he'll walk you through some of the highlights of the, uh, CAFR for the fiscal year ending March 31st of 2020, um, as well as going over the board's communications. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thanks, thanks, Andy. Uh, appreciate everyone's time tonight. Uh, like Andy said, I'll be going over the comprehensive annual financial report or the CAFR, uh, for the fiscal year ended March 31st, 2020, as well as the board communication report. Uh, also at this time, just want to thank Andy, Jean, Linda, the entire staff for all of their assistance. Obviously, this year was a bit of a unusual year. Uh, so we basically did the entire audit remotely. Um, so it was a little bit of a challenge, but, uh, Andy, uh, like I said, and his team did a great job of, uh, having everything uploaded to our portal on time. We were able to finish field work on time, basically hit all of our key audit dates and, uh, issue the reports on time. So, want to thank them, uh, very much for that, so.
And I would just pass those kudos on to Jean and Linda because they're a huge part, they're the main part of getting all that information together and pulled and organized.
Yeah, yeah, Jean and Linda were, uh, really, uh, really responsive to all of our questions, uh, as we went along in the, in the audit. So, uh, sometimes it's, you know, it's out of sight, out of mind, but, uh, since even though we weren't on site, they were real responsive to getting also all the info we needed, so.
Jean and Linda, that's...
So, I'll start with the comprehensive annual financial report and I call it, like I said, the CAFR when I'm talking about it. But, uh, so I'm going to start with the table of contents, just to give you a kind of an idea of, of what's in the report. It's about 82 pages, so it can be kind of, uh, kind of overwhelming, uh, what, what's actually in the report. So, I'm going to start on the, the table of contents. If you look at the table of contents, that alone is like three pages, so you know there's a lot of, a lot of info in this report, so. But there's three main sections, the introductory section, the financial section, which is the bulk of the report, and then the statistical section follows after that. So, um, we don't give an opinion on the introductory and the statistical sections. Uh, we don't audit those, so we don't give an opinion on that. Uh, we do give an opinion on the financial section, and I'll kind of walk through that, uh, as we go along here, so. Um, first thing I want to talk about in the financial second, financial section, uh, we have the independent auditors' report. That's the first, uh, first part, pages one through three. After that are what we call the general purpose external financial statements. Um, and that's going to start with management discussion and analysis that we'll take a look at in a minute. Um, following that are the basic financial statements. Uh, and the first two statements are what we call the government-wide financial statements. So they're going to basically be the consolidated financial statements, uh, for the district. Going to include all the funds, uh, in, uh, broken out into, into one column governmental activities. Um, it has a long-term focus, um, so it's going to have capital assets and long-term debt. And it's, it's similar to financial statements you'd find in the corporate world. Uh, after that are the, uh, fund financial statements. These are a little bit different. So these are going to have more of a short-term focus. Uh, there's no capital assets, no long-term debt. It's basically, um, focused on current spendable resources, similar to how you budget. Uh, and it's broken out by, uh, major funds, and then all of the non-major funds, which are, in your case, are only two funds, are aggregated and shown as, uh, in one column, which is second from the right, which we'll, we'll look at in a minute. After that are the notes to the financial statements. I'll point out one thing, too, uh, before I get to the notes. Pages, uh, eight and 11 basically have a reconciliation that, so that gets you from that short-term focus, uh, up to that long-term focus. It tells you what has to change or what's, what reconciling items you need to, uh, you need to have enabled to get to that, uh, short-term focus to that long-term focus. Um, like I said, after that, the notes to the financial statements start on page 12 and go through page 35. So, a lot of, uh, great additional information, uh, at least if you're an accountant, you might think it's great. Uh, so that's a lot of, uh, a lot of additional information that supports those basic financial statements that we just looked at, and they should be read, uh, in conjunction with that. Uh, after that, uh, on the second page of the table of contents is the required supplementary information. And I'll point out here, the, the required supplementary information or RSI, uh, in the management discussion and analysis, uh, we don't, uh, give an opinion on that as well. So we do some limited procedures on, on those sections, uh, but not enough to give an opinion, so I want to point that out. So the RSI basically has a budget versus actual for your general fund, and then it has a lot of additional information on your participation in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund or IMRF, as well as, uh, other post-employment benefits or retiree health, uh, fund. So that information is in the RSI. After that are the combining and individual fund financial statements. So that's going to have a lot of more, a lot more detailed, uh, uh, statements and schedules, including budget versus actual schedules, uh, both for your major funds and then your non-major funds as well. Uh, one thing I'll point out, too, we give what we call an in relation to opinion on this section, so in relation to those basic financial statements, they're fairly stated. What that means is not a whole lot. I mean, we might, we test a little bit less, our materiality thresholds might be a little bit higher, but, uh, basically, we're testing it the same way as the basic financial statements. And then following that, the last page is the stat section. Uh, again, we don't give an opinion on this section, but it has a lot of information on financial trends, revenue and debt capacity, demographic and economic information, and then operating stats as well. So it has a lot of 10-year trend information, a lot of non-financial data that kind of puts the financial, uh, uh, information into the, into the appropriate context. So, a lot of interesting information there, uh, like I said, and a lot of, a lot of 10-year trend information, so. And after that, there's some other information, some un-audited info, uh, related to some, uh, SEC requirements, and those are on pages 78 to 82, so. So that's kind of what's in the CAFR. Uh, I'll start off with the independent auditors' report, which is page one. Pages one through three are the only, uh, reports that we prepare and are responsible for. Management is responsible for the rest of the CAFR, um, and those responsibilities are explained here on page one. Turning over to page two, uh, up at the very top is the paragraph everyone's most interested in, that's the opinion paragraph. Um, and again, this year, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide, uh, to the district. A couple pages after that, uh, we are in the management discussion and analysis or MDNA. Uh, that's MDNA, page one.
Jim, can I stop you a second? I want to refer, so just in the boardroom, it's a smaller supplement here, so everybody's looking at the same document.
Now we're...
Now we're, now we're following.
Thank you.
It should be the, yeah, you should be in the CAFR.
Yeah, now I am.
Did you go back to the, oh, you went back to the, oh, you went back to the CAFR. Okay, I was on the small...
Yeah, no, yeah, I'm, I'm in the CAFR right now, and I'll stay in the CAFR, uh, for a little bit.
Okay, why are they out here?
Hello, hey, John?
Yeah, no problem.
He was on the, on my...
Uh, so it's, it's MDNA pa, MDNA page one, it's right after the independent auditors' report, which is on pages one through three. So the very next section after that...
It's the second tab.
Yeah, it's just a few pages after the, the finance tab.
Okay.
So if everyone is there, um, the MDNA is prepared by Andy. Um, he does a really great job on this. This is, uh, one of the longer and more thorough MDNAs that my clients prepare, so there's a lot of great information in here, great overview of the district's financial position and changes in financial position.
Hey, Jim?
Yeah.
If there's a way to shorten it up, let me know.
We can, we can talk about that next year, yeah. Not that I don't love reading 19 pages of an MDNA, but... So anyway, like I said, a lot of great info, um, a lot of, uh, it'll point out any significant changes or trends that might be occurring, too. There's a section on COVID-19 as well, uh, that we included this year. Um, and it has some three-year comparative data that you can't find elsewhere in the report. So, if you only want to read one thing in the 82 pages, read the MDNA because it provides a, a good overview of the district's finances, and Andy spends a lot of time on it, so he would appreciate that. Uh, right after the MDNA, we're into the basic financial statements, uh, which is, uh, the statement of net position. That's on page four, uh, actual page four, not MDNA page four. Well, these are the consolidated long-term focused financial statements I, I talked about earlier, uh, and the statement net position or your balance sheet, um, is on page four. So you can see down at the bottom, your, your net position. Basically, it's been pretty consistent, and even through the categories, you can see from 2020 to 2019, uh, pretty consistent, uh, uh, balances. Net investment and capital assets, that very first line under net position, the $151 million, that basically increased due mainly to paying down the long-term debt. So you're paying 78 million on the long-term debt each year, so that's increasing that amount, uh, by, uh, by that same amount. So everything, otherwise, though, unrestricted net position increased about $300,000. The restricted amounts, pretty consistent year over year. The next page is the statement of activities, uh, your income statement. This is a, a little bit strange for governments. Uh, we start on, with expenses on the far left, and we show that by, by function or activity, um, and then we back out any program revenues that are, uh, can, that are related to those funds to kind of come up with the, the net revenue or expense. So what, what has to be supported by general revenues, basically your property tax. So that's what that shows. So expenses subtract out the program revenues, you get to that 2020 column, and then you go down, and then that shows the general revenues after that. So that basically shows you what's supported, uh, by the, uh, by the property tax essentially. And you'll see a change in net position each year is, is pretty consistent, uh, year over year. Uh, it's higher than in governmental funds because of that, uh, that large debt payment that you make. In the, in the fund financial statements, that's an expenditure, but here, it's just a reduction of a liability, so that's what that causes that increase, so. Uh, the very next page, on page six, we get into those governmental fund financial statements. So these are the short-term focused financial statements, no capital assets, no long-term debt. Uh, the general fund is your very first column, and if you go down to page seven, your fund balance amounts. Uh, the assigned amounts are basically management's intent to use those, so there's no, uh, legal or enabling legislation, uh, that, uh, restricts those amounts. So management could change and decide to use those, uh, amounts for a different reason. But the unassigned fund balance after that, uh, is the last line. That's about 2.7 million this year, which is, uh, increased from the prior year's, uh, 2.4 million. And that's about 30% of current year expenditures, uh, or about, about a four-month reserve.
Can I ask what page she's on?
I know. You're still on your second...
You're on seven, seven, seven of the balance sheet.
Yeah.
And it's, I'm in the...
If I could just add one thing, if you guys are looking on page six and seven, the governmental funds balance sheet...
There you go.
So everybody's... So each, as everybody's looking at the columns going across each of those columns, obviously, as Jim said, represent one of our funds, those are the exact same, uh, financial information that we give you every month. The difference is, we present each fund as a separate sheet of paper just to make it easy to look at. That way, you have your balance sheet and income statement for each fund on one single page. It's a little easier, you know, to read and understand. And then the only other difference is under non-major, um, for reporting on the CAFR, we've combined the insurance fund information with a natural resource special revenue fund, and they're just combined together and listed under nine, non-major. Again, just to reduce it down, it makes it easier to look at.
Okay, uh, moving to page nine, um, is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance or your income statement. Again, this year, or again, the, the first column is the, is the general fund. And you'll see on page nine, uh, down at the bottom, the excess of revenues over expenditures this year for the general fund was about $507,000. Uh, prior year, uh, excess of revenues over expenditures was about $653,000, so fairly consistent.
And one more, one more quick comment on that. That 500,000 includes an unrealized gain on our investments. Those investments are CDs, and they're all held to maturity. Um, we'll never realize that gain because we will hold us investment CDs until they mature, and then we'll get 100% of the principal. We won't get any more, we won't get any less. Um, so if you back that out, you're only looking at a $406,000 real surplus, um, and more than half of that is from other operating revenue increases over budget. So only about $200,000, actually a little less than that, of that $400,000 real surplus was created from not expending, you know, the full expense side of the budget.
Yep, and if you look at page 10, the net change in fund balance or your net income, that's kind of your bottom line, uh, was about $530,000 this year. Last year was $241,000, but there was a $432,000 transfer out, um, in the other financing sources and uses that caused the last year, last year's balance to be a little bit lower. I'm going to skip ahead now, um, to the required supplementary information. Every year, I, I kind of go through your, uh, participation in IMRF and the, the scheduled employer contributions, as well as the, uh, schedule of changes in the employer's net pension liability and related ratios. Those are on pages 37 and 38. So you can see on, on page 37 is the scheduled employer contributions. You'll see, uh, the, uh, the first line is what the actuary at IMRF says you should contribute. Uh, the second line is what you actually contribute, which is exactly that, uh, so you have no access...
Can you hold on? I'm on 36 now, and what, what lines are you looking at?
Uh, 37. 37?
Page 37.
Oh, 37, okay, what line?
Top line, actuarially determined.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so the top line is the actuarially determined contribution, so that's what the actuary at IMRF says you should contribute. Uh, down below it is what you actually contributed, which is exactly the amount you've, uh, you were required to contribute, and then the excess deficiency obviously is zero. Um, so you can see that the contributions have been pretty consistent, uh, as well as the, the contribution as a percentage of covered payroll. So you've been, you know, between 11 and 12%, basically, uh, the entire five years, so. We have five years, we'll build out to 10 years eventually, uh, but we implemented the new pension standard five years ago, so that's why there's only five years right now.
I have a, I have a question. Uh, so of all the agencies that you look at, are they all hitting the, the contribution the same as what the determined contribution?
Could you, could you repeat that?
Yeah, so in almost all the agencies that you look at, are they matching up with the contribution being what the actuary has, the contribution they're hitting at?
Yeah, yeah, for IMRF, it's pretty much the, it, they contribute what, what they're supposed to.
11 to 12% is, is what it generally is?
Uh, it, it fluctuates. Um, I would say that's probably like around, around average. There's some that contribute more, there's some that are, you know, very low. There's, I've got a couple of clients that are prior to like 5 or 6%, but their, their funded ratio is, uh, you know, 100% or more, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's considered an agent multiple employer, uh, plan, so it basically is, look at it as kind of like a collection of single employer plans, uh, is what it is. So each, each person has a different funded ratio and a different contribution rate, so. Um, and the next page, 38, shows you the, basically the funded ratio, uh, for your, for your plan. So it's got five years again. You'll see the, uh, up at the top is the total pension liability, so that's what the actuary determines your pension liability to be as of 1231, uh, for each year. IMRF's plan year is, uh, 1231. What follows is the planned fiduciary net position, so that's the assets you have set aside at IMRF that you paid in to pay for those liabilities. And then the difference between the two is that employer's net pension liability, which is about, about, yeah, two-thirds, half, half the way down the page or so. So you'll see that, uh, back in 2015 is about $3.6 million, uh, as of 123119, uh, it's just a little under 3 million, and your funded ratio right now is about 86%. So, uh, you've been fluctuating between 77 and looks like about 88%, so you're, you're at the high end right now. But they determine that contribution we looked at previously, they build in, uh, an amount to basically have you be 100% funded, uh, in 24 years, um, so that, there, you're not insolvent at any point in time. Uh, they do a solvency test as well, so you, you always have assets to pay those liabilities, so you're not insolvent at any point. So, uh, bottom line is you're, you're well-funded. Uh, that's all I had on the comprehensive annual financial report. I'll look, uh, at the board communication report, which is the one that Elizabeth, um, uh, was showing you a couple minutes ago. That's the smaller report.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, sorry, just backing up one second. I'm fully funded in 24 years, is that starting as of five years ago, or what, what's that time period over?
Uh, 24 years as of December 31st, 2019.
Oh, okay.
So that, that's, they, they build that into determining your, your annual contribution rate every year.
Right.
Like a rolling 24, correct, Jim?
Rolling 24, got it, got it. Thank you.
Elizabeth, I have a question. Is this covered payroll? Does this include all employees of the district or only the non-union employees of the district?
So Jim, the question is, does this cover all employees of the district versus just bargaining or not bargaining? This is the entire team, correct?
Yeah, that's who's ever is eligible, yeah.
Yeah, and our, our union folks are in the IMRF, so it's everybody that's eligible for IMRF, which is all full-time employees. And, and a couple of part-time. If you work over 1,000 hours, if you're in a position that regularly works over 1,000 hours a year, you're eligible and we have to include you.
So, yeah, moving on to the, the board communication report, um, that's the, like I said, the smaller report. If, again, if you look at the table of contents, I'll kind of explain what's in here. We have a cover letter, and then that's followed by some required communication that we have to have with the board every year. So auditing standards require certain things to be communicated. This year, uh, pretty routine in nature. We didn't have any new, uh, accounting pronouncements that we adopted this year. Uh, like I said, we didn't have any delays with the audit, no disagreements, uh, with management, so it, pretty routine communication there. Uh, on page five is the adjusting journal entries. So we are required to communicate to you any audit adjustments we found, so these are adjustments that were found as part of the audit process. Uh, so we just had one, uh, one entry this year, that's on page five, our reclass, I think, of accumulated depreciation. So, uh, again, great job by Andy and his team, uh, having everything, um, fully adjusted for us when, when we started, uh, didn't have any adjustments, so, uh, great job by Andy. Uh, and then the management letter, uh, starts on page six, and kind of, as you would figure, since we didn't have any, uh, significant adjusting entries or anything, we didn't have any material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, uh, and we didn't have any new deficiencies this year either. So, uh, uh, like I said, great job by, uh, by Andy, Jean, and Linda, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, that you might have.
Thanks, Jim.
Anyone have any questions? I'm not seeing any, Jim. Thank you very much for... Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Thank you, Andy. Jean. Okay. McHenry County Conservation Foundation Project, oh, no, I picked one. For you of the September 22nd, 2020 regular meeting agenda items, anyone have anything, one of the stuff on hold? Nope, nothing for me. Yeah, I'm sure Chris has read all 675 pages. Yesterday, or Tuesday.
Just to bring attention to the ordinance on our levy is included in, uh, the ordinance. Uh, it has language that's drafted as the board discussed, which would be to take the levy and then the option to abate, and that is in the levy language of the, of the ordinance that, that you will be approving.
Read that. Okay, if we don't have anything else, we'll move on. Here we go, moving on to the foundation project funding, uh, those are interesting ones.
They sure are.
Was the foundation, have seen any of these, or are they, uh...
So, and Shawna is, uh, available as well. She's online. Um, based on our process, um, when we presented the full multi-year list to the board earlier in the year or the end of last year, uh, it went over to the foundation. Um, they have not selected a project, um, and everybody seemed to be okay. The next step was for our staff to fill out the details of the project... The next step was for our staff to fill out the details of the project, the specific timing and a budget. And that is what is being presented.
So only these five did so?
On those projects, correct.
Only only five did so?
Those are the only projects that have budgets that are moving forward. So again, this gives this board an opportunity to have a discussion, you know, questions about the budgets that's being proposed. Again, more detail, deeper guidance to the project. And then if it needs this group's approval on Tuesday, you would vote to move these forward over to the foundation board.
For them to select.
And then they will select which ones that they choose to fund.
Their money, they always get to pick. How the world works. Well, I thought they were all good narratives. The one I really most interested in is the Boulder Restoration. I've seen that myself. The very down-cunning, using new technology to fix it, raise hydrology, which was done just above across the street, across the road on Gladstone then. But I like the law. I, I was, I was moving forward for me.
This is our lead on. Is this shaping as you had hoped and envisioned?
Well, yeah, that's, I'm glad to see that. Great, yeah. Thought they were good.
So if I can ask, you know, if you totaled those five items, it's, you know, $120,000 roughly. Do we have any idea how much they think they can fund? And I guess I'm just asking.
I would ask Shana, maybe she would help you.
Thanks, Dave. So right now, of funds in our bank accounts already, and in addition to the projects that the foundation has already agreed to support this year, I'm encouraging them to support an additional $125,000 in projects. And some of those are tied to our ability to find grant support as well. But that is what has been proposed to them to move forward this year. In addition to things like the Dolman purchase, the May parcel purchase, and the other projects that you've already seen moving forward with the district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
When would I get a copy of that?
I will print a copy for you if you want before you leave it in the board jacket.
Okay. Well, we did for 2021, 2022, and 2023. And then when the, the narrative that was sent with this information, they showed where would they pick those out who you need. I'm worried about that. Hey, are we, we're ready to move on? That's executive director's report. We definitely will update for it.
I do. Okay. So on the teach-in debt certificate, we've had our ratings reviewed. That's one of the things that we need to do. And so I just sent that out to you. Again, the double A, which again, didn't change from the last time. So again, great work. So now we're moving forward for issuance with them. And that can be issued. I think we're ready to roll. I just signed off on something today, and Andy sent that back. So within the next 30 days, I suppose that we will be ready to offer anything else, Andy, on that.
No, we're moving along, and rates look good. So.
And we still have the A1A, or I feel like, I don't know the letters.
We're double A1, which is the second highest rating under Moody's. And that's where we were sat with the 2014 refinancing. So considering all the unknowns about COVID, and really, when we did the ratings call with the Moody's representative, probably an hour of the discussion was on looking at our financial planning and what we had showed the board, you know, for COVID, and how we really, you know, compared to other agencies that they're dealing with, had a very minimal impact. So, you know, it was, it was really a strong statement that we stayed double A1.
Perfect. Thank you. Perfect.
And then the other, the village of Boulder Ridge, so we don't have anything back. We did present from our last discussion that we'd be willing and open to having a lease agreement with them. And so that is under negotiation, looking for a management plan, et cetera. So we will expect that back either will be next month or the month after. But just wanted to keep it on, here to keep everybody apprised of everything. And then just to update, obviously, we hired a new executive administrative assistant. Anne is online, and we're gonna be recognizing her, of course, next week with her retirement after 30 years. But our, her replacement, they choose to fill, will be joining us on the 29th of September. And we'll be introducing you to her in the office room.
Wonderful, wonderful.
That's all.
Oh, you have, hey. Anybody else have anything else about right for tonight? Good, good. Hey, we're gonna move on to public comments too. Anybody out there?
Anybody ask for making a public comment? The hand raised.
I don't see anything.
All right. Then I'm going to have to ask for a motion for executive session.
Hi, motion.
Okay, let me make a motion beyond the executive session pursuant to 2C1 personnel and 2C221, review of both session minutes, the open meeting act, five I L C F. So anyway, I have a motion for that. Is there a second?
Second.
Lynn, second. That will all follow, please.
You can. Okay, trusty Chris.
Yes.
Trusty Cook.
Yes.
Trusty Dom. Trusty Thomas.
Yes.
Trusty Campbell.
Yes.
Trusty Grant.
Yes.
And trusty Henny.
Yes.
Okay, we have all voted in favor. And we will now go into executive session.
Now, I forget, we.
So for those that are joining us on the Zoom platform, we do not expect any action after executive session. And so we will be leaving the meeting. But if you want to come back for the final read up before we adjourn, you can log back on and we'll connect.
So I, I leave this bill.
I should say leave me.
Trusty Thomas.
Yes, present.
Trusty Grant.
Yes.
Trusty Chris.
Here.
Trusty Dom.
Here.
Trusty Campbell.
Here.
Trusty Cook.
Yes.
And trusty Henny.
Here.
Henny, we are here, we are for him.
Okay. Did you want to just give a little update on the litigation with Frankman? Or do you want to wait till Tuesday night to do that, or?
No, I'm, I'm happy to do that. So last Friday, we did get the ruling and from the judge. And we were successful with our effort. And this comes after many, many years of the district having issues relative to a shooting, often we wanted to join these properties onto Conservation District land, which made it very unsafe for anyone that was utilizing this property. We had a planned at all times for master plan for a trail, and particularly was a multi-use trail to go in for our multi-use that's walking, horseback riding. And so we had learned through the neighbors that, and from our experience, that one of the areas there was shooting going on. And so we never opened one of the segments of the trail that was behind the property. And that stayed closed indefinitely. And then we opened up, a lot of private money was raised. And so we ended up, after many years of attempting to, to work toward the resolution, we actually filed and we entered into a lawsuit where we were the plaintiffs against the property owner. And we had temporary injunction. During that time, for several years, no shooting could play. And so with the ruling that was given, it is a permanent injunction. No one can shoot from that property onto or towards Conservation District land. So the district, we're not full 360, but we have a good percentage of property. So the judge carved out an area that wasn't full, but gave enough based on us being the plaintiffs. So we received that. So the sites are, are safe to be utilized. And I'm sure that matters, Jean. And so again, I think we relied heavily, the work that was done by council, by our expert witness, was very effective in communicating just the general concerns for safety and health safety.
Reading the judge's opinion, the finding of all of the shells and projectiles out there, locating them, and he relied heavily on our expert witness, essentially, the.
And just the projections, the, the trajectory, and that a berm was not sufficient enough to ensure, and particularly the level of ammunition that was firing at distance. It's very interesting. So anyhow, we prevailed. And so after many, many years, whenever you go to make that decision to, you know, enter into a lawsuit, it sometimes it's the, it's the long path. And it's not the most expensive path.
Quite expensive.
But anyhow, I appreciate the board's patience, working through some different options. And again, the staff that testified and that, and the witnesses, it's a great job. So it's done, it's over. And then the only other, the Tsunade is, as I shared with you, was Leonard West and Arnold. Trusty, uh, Coates, you are going to join me and Attorney General Mark for that meeting. That's awesome. So thank you. And that'll be next week on the 23rd.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, anyone have anything else? Motion to adjourn would be appropriate.
That's Bill, okay.
Bill, I got Bill would like to do that.
I want to do like that. Oh, sorry.
David, David, be on second.
David is second, okay.
Okay, uh, vote, vote, vote for adjournment.
Okay, uh, trusty Grant.
Yes.
Trusty Chris.
Yes.
Trusty Campbell.
Yes.
Trusty Cook. Trusty Thomas.
Yes.
Trusty Dom. And trusty Henny are adjourned.
Great.
Trusty, 48. And thank you, and we will see you.
Tuesday.
Monday.
Monday.
Oh, Monday.
Oh, it's great, Monday. Thank you.
Foundation.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Seth. Bye.
Thank you, Seth.